Nice to all of y'all here this morning. As y'all can tell, I am not Chairman Brandon Chu. He is out of town today and I am presiding over this commission. Also, Commissioner Herring is not available today. So we do have a call with the three of us present. Starting with today's regular agenda. First item on the list is request to award ACCA joint county bid for debris removal monitoring services. Mr. Tyler, have you got anything to respond on that? It's a normal.
The state, well, that's been the ordering, that's been the ordering authority, is the statewide view.
Okay, make sure. All in favor of placing this on the agenda for our regular meeting for Monday? Second item on the list is request to approve resolution to relocate polling place in Columbia from the Rossi Perseal Municipal Building to the First Baptist Church of Columbia. Judge Davenport, do you have a response on that for us?
Good morning. Yes, as you are aware, in your involvement with elections and all of you gentlemen, in your involvement with elections, we utilize locations throughout the county to facilitate the election, the voting process for the, for the voting public. And of course, we want that to be as convenient and easily accessed as possible. And we have for many years used the library in Columbia. But that is, they've been very gracious to allow us to use it, but it is not the most spacious place. And we've, we've increased those numbers of voting participants in that community. So oftentimes that can get very crowded, not a lot of parking. So we've looked for some time for an alternative. Pastor Cooley at First Baptist in Columbia was gracious enough to allow us to use their family life center. It's a separate building. As you can see from your packet, it is a significantly larger fellowship hall type room, similar to many of the other locations that we, that we use throughout the county. So we think that is best for the voting public to encourage more participation, easier ingress and egress, and more space for the, for the voter to feel like they have the privacy they need to be able to vote. So that's what we're asking for.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions from Judge Davenport?
No.
All in favor of placing this on the agenda for Monday, respond by I. And Judge Davenport, next one's yours to.
Yes, sir. As you are aware, the.
Let me, hold on a minute.
Yes, sir.
Third one is to request to approve resolution to relocate polling place in Rehoboth from the Rehoboth Municipal Complex to Rehoboth Baptist Church.
Yes, sir. As you're aware, our growth areas in the county are in the Rehoboth area and the Wixburg area. And we have had a recently convenient location at the new municipal building, the community room there in Rehoboth. But over the last several elections, it has just become apparent that that is inadequate in size and volume. We've had folks that will insufficient, the church where we're asking to move it to, the Family Life Center is right next door. So over the last election, particularly the presidential election, they were having to park in the church parking lots anyway, and then walk across to get to the community room. And because of its limited size, we just can't facilitate the number of voters that end up showing there at one time, particularly in the, as y'all are aware, the seven to eight o'clock hour, the lunch hour, and then five to seven in the evening. The volume is just so great that we didn't have enough room to be able to do that effectively. So we reached out to the pastor at Rehoboth Baptist Church, and he graciously allowed, they're a great community member. They participate in a lot of programs there, the school, and the school utilizes the Family Life Center. It's a large GM area, much like Mount Gillid or Watermark, similar to that. So it's a very large location that would allow us to have plenty of room for voters to get in, vote, participate, and have adequate parking as well. So that's what we're asking.
Okay. Any questions for Judge Davenport?
Yes.
Judge, I'll just make one comment. I know y'all do your, your due diligence, and when y'all check and look for changing locations, and there's always good reasoning behind it, and they will be adequate notice before the election next month.
Yes, sir. We will, we'll publish that. All the affected voters will get an updated voter location card sent to them. So they'll, they will be definitely adequate notice. And as you can tell from your package, yeah, I mean, it's, it's from here to the, you know, you know, the gas station is one tenth of a mile in Rehoboth and two tenths of a mile in Columbia.
Yes.
So very minimal distance relocation.
Yeah, which both of them are still in sight and distance.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. And we're, just for your education, we are, I know it's your district, we are working on Wixburg, and we anticipate in the coming months having a, a motion before the, the commission as well to address voting in Wixburg.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All in favor of placing this item on the agenda for Monday? Number four, request to adopt a more formalized policy for the handling of indigent burial request in the county. Mr. Covert?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. As you gentlemen are aware, one of the roles of the chief administrative officer is to act as the funeral director for indigent burials in the county. We, as a, as a county, do not have a formalized policy on how to address this in accordance with the law of the state. And my, my proposal is that we enact a more formal policy that becomes part of the policy manual for the county to follow regarding the handling of these matters. Just as a way of, of information, since I have been with the county, we have had over fifty-five indigent burials in the last two years. That number has been over thirty. Now, we've seen a marked increase, and, and the policy, or the, the procedures that have been followed up to this point have been, we ask the Department of Human Resources to do an evaluation of the potential indigency, excuse me, of the, of the individual. But there's no real formalized process. And so generally, what has been the case is we have asked for any family members who are willing and able to handle the burial of their kid. The, the state law says, and I apologize, I thought it was in this packet, there is a policy that I put together to be included in this. And I'll make sure you guys have this after we leave this meeting today. But the state law just requires that it be proved that someone is unable to pay for the burial. And there are several counties in the state that have this policy that I am proposing to examine and evaluate the indigency of a, of an individual. And I just feel that we have, need to have a more formalized policy that would, that would allow someone to follow to determine indigency.
Any follow-up questions?
I guess I'm trying to understand, Pete, what, what policy, what are you trying to replace or move?
We're not really replacing the policy because there is no formal policy. We are trying to sort of make that more a formal policy that's available for people to see on the website, as our policy manual is, and also to have a structure to be followed to determine indigency.
Okay. I want to see if that policy makes sure.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
No. All in favor of adding this to the agenda for Monday?
Yes.
All right, the next four or five that's on the agenda for today all go together. Instead of doing it as a bullet point, the press said that we needed to list it as each individual items. And we've got Colton and Matt here from the chamber, and also Mr. Danny McNamara, McNamara, I'm sorry, from the Houston County Water Authority. So we'll get started with the first one. It's request to authorize chairman to apply for revolving loan fund from Wiregrass Electric on behalf of the Houston County in the amount of three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars at one percent interest for ten years. Peter, do you want to start with that one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the, and I just to remind you, gentlemen, this debt has already been included in the budget. So it's been, it's been allotted, allotted for approved in the budget. This is a, this is a financing at one percent for ten years that Wiregrass Electric will provide to the county. And the county will use this along with some additional funds, thirty-seven thousand dollars worth of funds to pay for the design and plans to, to facilitate the, and I would, I want to call it the last mile, facilitate the last mile of the sewage.
Expansion.
Expansion, thank you, out to the industrial park. That will provide the opportunity for the park to be able to support, facilitate additional, additional lots to be developed.
So, so, so you're speaking on, I know we're on item five, but you're speaking on six too right now? You're speaking on six right now?
That is, there is a budget amendment. That amount of money is not in the budget. That is a budget amendment for that ten percent component. Yes, sir.
So these last agenda items, six, six through nine, actually go with item?
They're all, they're all interrelated.
Yes, okay. There's just the guidance of the county attorney to put them down as an individual items.
I got you.
No, any?
I have a question, Chairman. The, the three point five million that we received in grants that we were able to achieve, does it cover this right here?
This is, this, these are, these are fees for an engineering firm to be able to design that last mile as well. And that's not, that, I don't believe the grant money is going to be used for that.
Okay, that's what I mean, yeah.
That's true.
It is great.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Any more questions?
I just want to say, Colonel, what we need to.
Yeah. All in favor of adding the item on the agenda for Monday? Number six, is request to approve a budget amendment in the amount of thirty-seven thousand for engineering fees related to the distribution port sewer expansion project. And as Peter just said, that's all part of that. That part there was not in with the amount, with the budget. So we'll have to do a budget amendment on that. All in favor of adding that to the agenda? All right, the number seven is request to approve MOU with Houston County Water Authority in regards to the sewage project. Mr. Danny, you have any response on that, or you just? Okay. When Chairman gets back and gets with the attorney and all, they'll get it all drawn up and meet with y'all. All in favor of adding that to the agenda on Monday?
Aye.
All right, a request to approve establishing a fifty thousand dollar contingency fund for catastrophic, catastrophic sewer repairs.
Twenty-seven, twenty-seven.
Not I meant, I just did that, the MOU, yes.
Okay.
And then we'll, for the fifty thousand dollar contingency fund for the sewer repairs. There's been conversation back and forth from the commission and also with the water authority on trying to help set up a contingency fund with them. So in case something does happen, there'd be some money there to cover before any insurances kick in or for any unforeseeable monies that may be needed in any repairs. Colton, do you want to elaborate on that a little bit further? Make sure my explanation of that is clear enough?
Yes, sir. Clear as mud, that's right. As long as it's clear, that's what, that's what matters, right? So, so that's exactly right. So over the course of the last couple of weeks, obviously, you know, we've been going back and forth in terms of through, through communication with you guys and the water authority to identify a certain amount that we could get the water authority comfortable in terms of incurring this additional responsibility that they're going to have with the sewer line. So they desire to have fifty thousand dollars in general as it relates, excuse me, there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars allotted for any emergency repairs that is needed for the sewer line and additional pump stations that are going to be added to this. So the Port Authority graciously voted to approve transferring seventy-five thousand dollars to the county at their last meeting in support of this. So that, that hundred and twenty-five thousand total, seventy-five is coming from the Port Authority, going to the county, and the county, I believe that's your next agenda item, is will be going to the water authority. So that differential of fifty thousand is needed as a safe haven for you guys to keep right, to ensure that if anything above that seventy-five is needed for emergency purposes for the water authority, then they can call upon that fifty thousand that you guys to access to make repairs before insurance kicks in.
Thanks, sir. Any further questions?
So the three hundred and thirty-three thousand, right?
Yes, sir.
That we're borrowing on ten years of one percent interest?
Yes, sir.
And the last, and there's all the three items for the engineer fee, one for the catastrophic sewer repairs, and the seventy-five thousand dollars, which is, that's one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Is that going, is that, just those three items, the thirty-seven, fifty, seventy-five is one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
Is that in addition to the three hundred and thirty-three thousand?
So, so, so the, there's a hundred and twenty-five, that is the water authorities, right? So that thirty-seven that you're looking at is the ten percent of the total of three hundred and seventy thousand. So there's a total of three hundred and seventy thousand that is going to be used for engineering and design for this, for this sewer line and package treatment plant operation. So we're bar, you guys are borrowing the ninety, ninety percent of that, the three hundred and thirty-three from Wiregrass Electric.
Right.
So Wiregrass Electric requires ten percent to be paid for of the project upfront, right, for overall cost, right? So, so that's what that thirty-seven thousand is needed in cash from you guys to, to continue the engineering design of this work.
Okay, so it's not, the total is not three hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy thousand?
For engineering and design, yes, sir. And you're just putting down the ten percent down payment of that.
Still clear as mud.
We need a diagram.
Yeah, what do you get with?
Now, this right here is going to set us up to begin the project, right, utilizing the grant. When do we foresee this to be completed?
So I hope, we, we hope to bid this out in quarter one of twenty twenty-six. And then Matt and I were having this discussion with our engineering folks last week. We hope to be able to start dispensing funds that we received from that, from that grant, hopefully by April of twenty-six. So hopefully we can bid it out, have it, have it awarded, and begin spending, spending those funds by the end of quarter one, early quarter two of twenty-six.
And when do you think it'll be operational to?
Hopefully by the end of the year of twenty-six.
Oh, okay.
And, and the comment earlier in regards to the, the grant funds that have been received, being able to, to be utilized for engineering and design, and we, unfortunately, we can't, we wish we could. That's just statutory law, the, the grant that was received, that can only be used for that actual project and not the engineering and design.
Well, we got to have skin in the game too, so.
Yes, we'll take three point two, won't we?
Yes, absolutely. That's it. All right. Any more questions? All in favor of adding this to the agenda for Monday? And as Colton was referring to, the last item on the agenda, excuse me, is to request to approve transfer of seventy-five thousand from the general fund to Houston County Water Authority for sewer repairs and expenses. And that is going to be from the Port Authority that will be more or less, Peter, through and through from us, from Port Authority to the commission to the water authority.
There is, there is need to set up a separate special fund for the fifty thousand dollars. That is a one-time contribution, and it's not replenished, and it only will be used if needed. So it'll stay there almost as if it were a permanent fund. The seventy-five thousand dollars from the Port Authority is, will be in a separate, once that, once that money is formalized, it'll be in a separate budget amendment, is we have to, we did not, we did not provide for that seventy-five thousand dollars in the budget. So it needs to be budgeted, even though it's money coming, it needs to be a budget amendment. But the fifty is coming out of the general fund as a transfer into a special reserve fund.
Hey, we'll set it there for.
They turn it in too.
Do they need?
If they need it better.
Okay. Sorry.
Yep, me.
Yeah.
No problem.
Okay. Or any more questions on that item?
We get it worked out, that's all that matters.
Yes. Any objections to adding this to the agenda on Monday?
Aye.
All right, with that being completed of the agenda for today, we do have two requests for privilege of the floor by Ms. Noble Bay. Is she here?
Yes.
Okay. If you will, step up to the podium here. The microphone's already on. You will have five minutes, and I will keep up with the time on that, and I'll let you know when your five minutes is up.
I'm not used to speaking in front of people, but I'm going to do it today.
Okay, all right, you ready?
Yes.
All right, you, five minutes, I start.
How everybody's doing today?
Good, how are you?
Great. My name is Noble Halala Bay, and I'm here to speak to you all about the serious misconduct, corruption, and retaliation surrounding the arrest of ongoing treatment of my son, Joshua Biggins. Joshua Biggins is in the Houston County Jail as we speak. The, one of the arresting officers was Chris Summerlin, and he was the same officer that was later charged with convicted for stealing money from the evidence room related to a twenty, twenty-two bank robbery. And this was, this wasn't just a small mistake. This was a breach of public trust by someone sworn to uphold the law. Yet this same man had the authority to arrest my son, to testify against him, and to shape a case built on deception. Even more disturbing, the officer allegedly kidnapped my Joshua's stepson, my son's stepson, a minor, from their home, driving him all the way to Taylor, Alabama. And his mom personally had to demand for him to bring him back to the house. The matter was reported to the Houston County Sheriff's Department, but no action, no investigation that we know of so far because no one returned our phone calls, and no accountability was followed. Silence from those who are supposed to serve and protect. Then on July seventeenth, after I personally spoke with the sheriff about another officer, Brandon Barnes, about he's keep stacking frivolous charges on my son, and I have evidence that these are frivolous charges. And I think they, they're making it as be normal that he stacked charges, they call him the stacker, frivolous charges on, on people that's incarcerated and they can't help themselves. And, and the thing of it is, it seems as if when he stacked the charges, he don't, the inmates don't get a chance to have a preliminary hearing. It goes straight to indictment. He don't have a chance to even challenge the hearsay of what Barnes has said, you know, to get the charge. So that same day, I went and spoke with the sheriff about the frivolous charges that's on my son. That same night, office correction officer by the name of Kelly Holland had attacked my son while he was on, on the phones. And he, my, my son was on the phone with his wife at the time, and the officer, Kelly Holland, was screaming, "Get off the phone, get off the M F phone." And he grabbed the phone, snatched it out my son's hand. So she called me and she said, "Please get over there and see if John is, Josh is okay." I got to the sheriff office, and I said, "Please, somebody come down and tell me that my child is okay." So come, when I hear about the story, the officer was trying to provoke my son. I don't know if he was sitting there to attack my son after I talked to the sheriff department, because that's just a coincidence that that happened like that. And kind of found out that the officer wrote up a report or gave a verbal report stating that my son had struck at him. So the other correction officer, when they came in, they heard about that. They said, "No, that's not like Joshua. Joshua's the type of person that he tried to keep the whole pie straight, you know, saying, hey, y'all, let's settle down, you know, because we don't want to get on lockdown." So she, they demanded to see the video. And once the video was seen, it came, it was discovered that the officer lied. He lied on my son. So he was, I think he was a reporter, he was reported to another commander, but we never heard anything else about that. And this officer was turning his camera off and on while he was saying whatever he wanted to say. He was turning his camera off, and then he'll turn his camera back on. And I looked this officer up on the Facebook. When I looked him up, he has a Confederate flag as his profile picture on his Facebook. And I just think that, you know, to each, to each and all, but still, he works with the police department, he works with the Houston County Jail. I just don't think that an officer that's affiliated with that should be an officer. I just don't feel that that's safe. I don't think my son is safe. Yeah, he's, that's when he filed a false report. They reviewed the camera to make matters worse. Oh, a false hold was put on my son. It's like it's a big retaliation on my son. A false hold out of Lee County was placed on my son. My son had never been to Lee County before in his life. I talked back and forth with the sheriff department in Lee County. She says, "My son has never been here before. He's never been in our system." And so I'm wondering, who put those, who put that hold, that illegal unlawful hold on my son out of Lee County?
That's right.
Is someone?
Ms. Bay, let's wrap it up. That's ended your five minutes.
Okay, okay, okay. So what I'm saying today, we have to have, hold our officers accountable for misconduct and wrongdoing, and, and making false charges. And then you being, then a person has to be pressured, the, the plea, a guilty plea, because you're saying, "Oh, if we make you, if we, if you make us have to dismiss on, on this case, because they don't want to bring the officers on the record of doing their wrongdoing, they don't want to do that. They don't even want you to have preliminary hearings to bring the officers, you know, to be accountable. They don't want it on the record. And that's not fair. And I thank y'all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bay.
And I, and I have also on the record copies of affidavits that was written, of what I'm talking about.
Ms. Bay, have you had any conversations with our sheriff department and leadership there yet? Have you had any conversation with them?
I have, I've called Mr. Brandon Chu, but I, I, when I went to talk to the sheriff that same night, that's when they retaliated on my son. They retaliated on my son.
And what night, what night was this?
July seventeenth, if I'm not mistaken.
Of this year?
Yes, sir. And then they put him in lockdown for twenty days for just being out of designated area. And that used to be like a, like a, a, a twelve-hour hold or twenty-four-hour hold. They locked him down for twenty days. And then they just all of a sudden made us a new rule saying that even for the minor charge, that we're just, we're just, you know, you still going to get a major hit for that. And his, his, his attorney told him yesterday, said, "Oh, they just don't like you, and they want you to go to prison." Well, who is they? I'll be back at the next meeting, and I can tell you the, the more investigation that I have found out who they are. And I want to pack this around to you also, you can have it for the record. This is the affidavit from his wife. And this is the affidavit from the minor child that was kidnapped. There is a report of the kidnapper from Chris Summerlin. And it's strange that the other cases are being dismissed, that's being handled by Chris Summerlin, but they've been holding my son for a year and not dismissing his case on Chris Summerlin. Thank you all so much, Bay.
All right, moving on to the next. Uh, moving on uh to the next um privilege of the floor, um, is Ruth Paige Nelson.
Again, sorry. Yes.
And Ms. Nelson, once again, as you heard, uh, as I told Ms. Bay, you have five minutes.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Ruth Paige Nelson, and I'm here today to speak about three things. Number one was the um, I noticed I was witness, first thing I witnessed to some, what I believe is felony criminal theft by Carla Woodall. Number two, I participated in a forum in this chamber during the municipal elections that constituted an unlawful contribution in several um conflicting behaviors, I believe, that involved the county, the sheriff, the county commission, and just contributing to the municipal election in a manner that was not consistent with the law. And thirdly, I am concerned about the fact that we have two sitting county sheriffs on this commission. Number one, I went with Ms. Andrea Egerton Mayo to visit Carla Woodall one day, when she had prevailed in a lawsuit. Carla assured her that the ten thousand dollars missing out of her file had been given to the opposing attorney, Peter McInnis, in a case against Mrs. Stephanie Mett. Andrea applied for her money to be retrieved that the court had ordered held. Carla told her that she had given this ten thousand dollar check to Peter McInnis, it was a still-dated cashier's check. We then went from Army Aviation at the time, before they renamed themselves All In. I bought, I went with her to All In from Aviation, and they said, well, it's a cashier's check, it's our money, we can do what we want. She said, why did you cash a check from me? She, they reissued the check and gave this woman the money. Andrea is afraid of retaliation, and you can understand, when I listen to this Halona Bay, I've been an advocate for a long time, but I'm not necessarily here advocating today, because I'm speaking firsthand uh at courages, what I witnessed. She's afraid to go and try to file a complaint, because she feels that she will be arrested, and rightfully so. Her husband is a police officer at the city of Atlanta. And one day she was stopped, and the officer said he was told to arrest her and to take her vehicles. Our person in the car with her re- re- all downtown and said, what is she being arrested for? We have no warrant. The warrant was signed after she was arrested by Don Velez. Very, very troubling. Now, secondly, I was supporting two gentlemen who were running for mayor and district recommission in the last city election, and they thought they were coming to a forum here in this chamber uh back on June the thirtieth, when they were told they weren't able, weren't going to be able to participate. These were black men, and all of the white men were able to participate. We found them on goodparty.org saying that they were nonpartisan. However, we were told by the GOP that this was a private um meeting. Well, you can't have a private meeting with nonpartisan candidates that are in a county building, and the sheriff he stood right along there midway of this room with the sheriff, he's been invisible. Now, we were told, I was told that I could stay in the meeting if I was not disruptive. I was told by Jimmy McPray that he had came earlier before me, I found him sitting in the audience, I said, why are you sitting out here? And he said, because they told us we could stay here, we'd behave. Now, do you know how it feels to sit here and watch Mark Saliva stand there and talk, he's looking at his opponent, and he has the responsibility of protecting those constitutional rights? And so does Bradley Badwell, the incumbent, I have to tell you, and Josh Chapman. All the incumbents had that responsibility, but they took advantage of an additional forum and what meant what was an illegal campaign contribution eventually, because they did not report it, it was streamlined by WTVY. Of course, we get media blackout when it's so white on black crime in this area, you don't care about it. Thirdly, I became my attention that Mr. James Ivey is the head of the county jail, I believe also, and Ricky Harry are both county sheriffs, is what I'm told. That is a violation of the Alabama law for um having two positions. So when we're a sitting, we have two sitting sheriffs simultaneously serving as Houston County Commissioners, consolidating policing power and fiscal authority in direct conflict of Alabama Constitution Article seventeen, number two eighty, and Alabama Code thirty-six two dash one, which prohibit dual office holding. This dual status creates an impermissible conflict of interest that violates the equal protection and due process law
Ms. Nelson, let's finish making that your time, Joe.
By the blending of enforcement, prosecution, and policymaking roles into the same individuals. Then we have a problem.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you.
Alright, anything else to add to the agenda for Monday? Nope. Not. Motion to this mayor. Thank you, sir. We will see y'all back Monday morning.